Right here.
Hold on. Okay. Oh, no.
I would like to call the May eighth, twenty twenty four City Council regular meeting to order. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the platter of the United States of America. And we should recall that we should stand one patient under trial in the visible liberty and justice.
Will a clerk please call the roll?
Carrie.
Present.
Chilson.
Present.
Hutchings.
Present.
Nelson.
Present.
Parker.
Uh, she has an excused absence.
Whackler.
Present.
Cassidy. I'm sure he's on his way.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda?
I move to approve the agenda and the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. Are there any changes to the agenda or consent agenda? Mr. Chilson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move to amend the agenda and consent agenda by adding Lay Down Resolution twenty twenty four zero one four, a resolution commending Noble Cassidy for his exemplary service and representation while serving as a Saldana City Council student representative sponsored by the mayor and council.
Are there any objections to adding Resolution twenty twenty four dash zero one four to the agenda and consent agenda? Saying none, uh, the resolution is added to the, uh, agenda. Would the clerk please read the consent agenda?
April twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, our council meeting minutes. Resolution twenty twenty four zero one four commending Noble Cassidy for his exemplary service and representation while serving as Saldana City Council Student Representative sponsored by the mayor and the council. That is your consent agenda.
Okay. Are there any public comments on any of the items just read by the clerk? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone.
Tyson Cox, Saldana. I was, I didn't know that was going to be on the agenda tonight for, uh, Cass or for Noble. I just wanted to say that I've been into several of your meetings over the past couple of years, and he has done a great job. Um, with his comments, even when very tough. Um, I will take last meeting, whether people agree with his comments or not, that was probably a very hard thing to do. And I very much respect that because I don't even know very many adults that can get up here and do that without getting super nervous or not even doing it. So I do respect that very much, and I, I just wanted to say that, and I, I do really, um, appreciate you guys noticing his, um, his service here because it's pretty important. Anyways, thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on, uh, any of the items that were read by the clerk? Seeing none, I'll take a look at Zoom. And I see no hands raised there. So, uh, having no one wishing to, uh, no one else wishing to speak, the approval of the agenda and consent agenda is back before the council. Are there any council objections to approving the ascent, uh, agenda and consent agenda? Mr. Carey?
Uh, no objection, and your priority plan too, but I want to be sure that, uh, once the individual gets here, you're going to read it in front of them.
Yes.
Thank you.
I was kind of hoping he would be here. Next, uh, hearing none, the agenda and consent, uh, agenda are approved by unanimous consent. Well, moving on to the next item, I'm. Do we have a problem if I wait on reading that resolution until he arrives?
Not at all.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is public comments and presentations. Item others, items other than those appearing on the agenda, three minutes per speaker, uh, twenty minutes aggregate. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? Please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Yes, Ethan Van Battle, three thirty eight Banner Lane. I commented last meeting on, uh, degenerate materials purchased by and distributed through our public library. Since then, I did receive a response from librarian Rachel Nash on my objection submitted through the proper process to that particular book I spoke of last week, along with several others with similarly disgusting and depraved content messaging. Unsurprisingly, my concerns were smugly dismissed, and Mrs. Nash reiterated that the books she personally selected for our library collection are perfectly acceptable to have, citing the library policies that she herself and the radically leftist and subversive American Library Association have crafted. Another book found in our public library available for ten year olds to check out, no questions asked, is Gender Queer. Again, this book has been selected personally by Rachel Nash for our public library collection. It's the heartwarming story of a girl's journey from child to adult wherein she bonds with friends over erotic gay fanfiction, experiments with various sex toys and all imaginable, all imaginable methods of masturbation, and dreams of herself as not a girl, but a boy, and of sodomizing an ever increasing number of other boys. She dreams of one day having a, a, uh, money hungry doctor chop off her breasts so that she may more fully pursue the delusion that she is a man and not the woman she actually is. Some illustrations from this book. For years, my standard method of masturbation was stuffing a sock into the front of my pants and manipulating the bulge. This would evolve into hip thrusting while thinking of my latest gay ship. In one of her, uh, trysts, she has, uh, one of, one of her liaisons, uh, perform oral sex on her strap-on dildo. That was the visual she'd been picturing, she says. She even fantasizes about men diddling boys or what the state of Alaska may well term sexual abuse of a minor in the second degree, a class B felony. A little smaller. Despite what our librarian may, Rachel Nash may think, this material is not appropriate for our public library, and our public dollars should not be used to promote virtue, our, our public dollars should be used to promote virtue in our community, not celebrate and proper propagate degeneracy even to minors. Again, ten year old, ten year olds, no questions asked, can check this out. That's all.
Any questions from the council? Thank you, sir. Anyone else here in the, uh, audience wishing to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll take a look at Zoom, and I see no hands raised at Zoom, on Zoom. So moving on to the next agenda item, number five, are there any representatives from the borough or state in attendance who would like to speak? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. And I see Mr. Cox here in the audience from the Borough Assembly.
Logan Tyson Cox, uh, District Four Assembly. Um, I was just gonna let you know a little bit about what we did yesterday. We started early at ten ten, um, for our budget hearings, and that is our second budget hearing. It was more bulky than the first one because the first we started in Seward, and so we only had a couple of items for the Seward area on that day. Um, couple of the bigger items that we dealt with that would concern Saldana would be, we did pass a resolution last night that was based on Ms. Bauer's letter that you guys had in your last packet at your meeting that had to do with the, uh, Buy America or Build America, Buy America, um, infrastructure projects and how that's affecting, how that policy is affecting a lot of our projects in the area, and I know it's even affecting Saldana with their projects as well. And so we did end up passing that last night. You will get a copy of it. Uh, Ms. Bauer is a little bit different than the one I had sent you previous that I had submitted because there were a few amendments to that, but I still think that it does get the idea across that we need some change and they need to be a little bit more flexible on, on how that's coming forward so that we can get our projects done in a timely manner. And, and I do want to thank her for that. If you have not read through the letter or anyone listening hasn't, they should do so because it is a well-written letter. Um, the other thing that we worked on was we did set the floor for the school district's budgeting, um, which means we, we had, um, the school district came to us with an ask of fifty-eight million, one hundred seventy thousand, nine hundred seventy-four dollars. Uh, mayor, the mayor proposed budget is asking us to set the floor at fifty-six million, two hundred twenty-eight thousand, um, three hundred seven dollars, which is almost a two million dollar difference. Um, it is something that passed unanimously yesterday on consent. I think the idea is very much taken that that is the floor and that if money stays where it's at, it's likely that that could stay there because right now, um, coming from the House and the Senate in their budget is a hundred and seventy-five million, which would equate to a six eighty BSA increase, which is pretty close to where we need to be with most of that. Um, personally, I, I just talked to the superintendent, and if he has suggestions on where they need to be, that's where my numbers usually end up coming in. Um, but we are within that realm of where they need to be. Um, uh, the Borough Mayor is very adamant about having his budget stay at that two point five percent increase for the year. Um, I don't know. I think that the, uh, the school districts was a little bit less than that for a whole, but the money they were asking from us would put that over on their ask. And so that's kind of where we're sitting on that. Um, if the governor vetoes that hundred and seventy-five million, we may be talking a whole different story. But remember, even if we are, our take on that is we can only give another two million dollars, which would not be a whole lot if he canceled out a, a lot of that or cut it in half like he did last year. So those are the two things that would affect here a lot. Um, I'm also going to give a little bit of plug for Capehead. I know several of you went to that. If you didn't go, it's on their website. Um, you can watch the forum. It has this actually posted on there that has the times and stuff so that if you didn't want to sit there and watch the entire forum, you just wanted to watch part of it, you could fast forward through and find these sections. Uh, real quick, what I'll tell you, I personally found the most interesting is there was a, um, economic, a person from the, an economist from the state of Alaska came, and one of the things that he stated was for every one person that needs a job, we have two jobs in the state of Alaska. And that there are other states that are finding the same thing. How are we going to entice people here? Part of it is housing. Housing is a huge issue. Um, if we can get them here, because people, you know, people still think Alaska is cool, they would like to come in at least see it. But to get people here, we have to have places for people to stay. And so that was one of the things that he talked about. And then, of course, the other one is always, um, childcare is a big issue, those kinds of things. But it is positive that almost every economics, uh, status or, uh, all the, um, numbers that he put up on his board and said, okay, this is where we're at economically. The state was pretty stagnant, and we were always slightly above that for the Kenai Peninsula. So the Kenai Peninsula, as far as the state is going, is doing better than other parts of the state. So that's good to see. Um, the other one that I personally liked really well was, um, there was a section called Future Renewable Energy on the Kenai Peninsula Projects, Programs, and Careers. It had some pretty cool stuff. They talked to some about title, which I've always, we've always kind of, everybody talks about it and then goes, well, that's really not going to work here. It sounds like they're coming up with some somewhat feasible ideas that could work in the state of Alaska. So I thought that was pretty interesting to look at. But if anyone wants to look at it, go to their website and they're on there, so.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Chilson?
Just a comment. I'd, I'd just like to say that, you know, over the years that I've been on council, um, I, I observe varying degrees of engagement from our representation on the Borough Assembly, and I'm very appreciative of the level of engagement that you show, uh, our city council and making sure that we're fully informed. And you're here every meeting with a lot of good information that's, that's essential for us as we make our own local policy decisions. And I just, I thank you for that. You do a great job and work as an English Dada. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate that, and I think part of that might be because I sat on this council first and, and would have liked to have heard some of that myself, but thank you.
Yeah, I have a couple of, um, comments also. The, um, if the, um, legislature passes the, um, you know, can't think of the budget that had included the extra few million dollars that came from ARPA that hadn't been distributed earlier. Will that have any effect on, um, what they get from the school district would get from the, uh, borough?
Well, right now, the second number I told you, the fifty-six million dollar number, that is where we're at. So whether they get that or not, that's going to go directly, as far as I know, that goes directly to the school district if that were to happen. And I believe it's around five million dollars is the number that they're looking at. But it doesn't mean that they're going to get it all at once either. There's a lot of talk on whether that will come in in increments. I, I don't know. There, there's still, it's really up in the air at the moment. Um, but it's very clear that it's owed in some way is from what I'm understanding.
And the other comment I had, uh, I saw a presentation today, and I'm thinking it was from Homer Electric, but it could have been Matt Nuska, Electric Association, uh, discussing title, uh, uh, power. And they have some plans and they had some, uh, graphs and, um, pictures of what they're looking at for the future. So it's, it's something that's being considered for sure.
The one speaking about it too, here's the significant part is, is they were talking about doing it towards Nikiski. So that would be a Kenai Peninsula project, which is pretty darn significant in itself.
Yeah, I think one of the things they said it had to be pretty much ice free, and it would be located more down in the Homer area.
The one that came to this and spoke, just as a little thing with that, is they were showing that there's like three different types of, uh, machines that they were looking at that could do that. One that's set more towards the top, one that's set more towards bottom, and one that's sat right in the middle. And they're thinking about the one in the middle because you don't have to worry about the ice or the silt issues as much.
Yep. Also wind power.
Yes.
Using some of the old platforms. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda is item number six, Public Hearing, uh, Ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero one seven, Approving a Donation to the Central Area Rural Transit System Incorporated and Increasing Estimated Revenues and Appropriations by Five Thousand Dollars in the General Fund for this pers- purpose, introduced by Vice Mayor Parker, may have a motion to enact. Mr. Chilson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had moved to enact ordinance twenty twenty four zero one seven.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Ms. Hutchings, for the second, and I'll report from Councilmember Chilson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so this ask, uh, came in following our March twenty-seventh presentation that we received from Carts, and, uh, that was a highly informative discussion. Um, very appreciative of all the information they were able to relay to us as a council. It's, it's very eye-opening just to see the amount of transportation services they're providing in our community and the impact that that is affording, uh, to those that live here. Um, this particular request is a five thousand dollar, uh, funding request, I believe, was sent out to, uh, multiple municipalities on the peninsula and is a special one in that it has the opportunity to exponentially grow via federal dollars. So if we were to approve this today, this five thousand dollar amount would, uh, potentially be able to be matched up to eleven thousand, six hundred dollars. So a lot of opportunity there, and I fully support this, and I look forward to seeing support from the full council on this one.
Thank you. Um, are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Uh, anyone in the audience wishing to speak on that item, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, everyone. My name's Jessica Schultz, um, address three five one three nine KB Drive. Um, I'm the Executive Director of Carts, and I'm here to quickly speak on ordinance two zero two four dash zero one seven regarding the five thousand dollar donation to Carts. Um, as noted in my previous presentation, in twenty twenty-three, Carts delivered almost thirty thousand trips with twenty-three percent of them being delivered in the city of Saldana. Local contribution in any amount can be used as match funds. Carts has the ability to leverage an additional sixty percent on top of any donation. So, um, as Councilmember Chilson said, with the five thousand dollar donation, we can leverage, um, we can turn it into an eleven thousand, six hundred dollars. Um, residents and businesses within the city will greatly benefit from any monetary donation. With that, I would just like to thank, um, the council for considering this donation, and I look forward to building a long and beneficial partnership with the city of Saldana. Thank you.
And any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else wishing to, uh, comment on ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero one seven? And please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi there, this is Harmony Curtis. My address is one four one Trumpeter Avenue, Saldana. Um, I'm on the Carts Board, and I just wanted to be here and say that I support this and thank you for taking this into consideration. It's always nice to get that community support for this service.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on ordinance twenty four, twenty twenty four dash zero one seven? Please, uh, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Katie Calgill, it's Chanelna Avenue. Um, the reason that I want to talk about this is I come from a different side of the picture. I used to, uh, use drugs and alcohol heavily, and I spent a lot of time in jail, in and out of jail. And what I know about Carts and transportation is that in order for me to succeed, I needed to be able to get to my probation, to my job interviews, to my doctor. And with, with interruptions that happen and people end up, they end up forced into situations that aren't healthy for them, or they end up violating. And Carts has been so affordable for so long. Twenty-three years, Carts has been in operation, and we have maintained that two dollar and fifty cent per zone price. And it's one of the most, um, positive aspects about our community, and we do, uh, we have been really working as a board to initiate greater programming and greater access for the community. So thank you very much.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you. Please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Tyson Cox, Saldana. Um, on this, I'm, I'm also speaking as board member of Carts. Um, the, I know it may only be five thousand dollars, but five thousand dollars, it, it's not as much about the money as it is about rebuilding the relationships with our municipalities. Um, I know that's been very, very distant. And in fact, when I was on council, I don't even, I think it was before that, that they had stopped giving money to Carts. And so I, I just hope everybody realizes how big of a deal this is for Carts to be able to start these relationships again and to build that trust back of having municipalities back them and having, having the idea that this is truly a community resource. So anyways, I thank you guys for considering it. Um, I hope it passes for sure. Thanks.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Cox. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll take a look at Zoom, and I see no hands raised there. Having no one else who wishes to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Seeing none, are there any objections to approving ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero one seven? Seeing none, ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero one seven is approved by unanimous consent. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, uh, ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero one eight, Increasing Estimated Revenues and Appropriations by an Amount Not to Exceed Nine Hundred and Thirty Eight Thousand, Seven Hundred Dollars in the Utility System Capital Improvement Fund for an anticipated increase in the Alaska Clean Water Fund Loan from the State of Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation for the BioSolids De-watering Replacement Project, introduced by the city manager, may have a motion to enact. Mr. Nelson?
I'll move to enact ordinance twenty twenty four zero one eight.
And thank you, Ms. Hutchings, for the second, uh, report from the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This appropriation appropriates a loan. Um, and as you know, previously, there were community grant funds from EPA that were used for the project. Um, and based on the engineering estimates, it was found that we needed additional funds, and these are the funds to help complete the project, and this appropriates those funds.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public, oops, excuse, oh, yeah. Are there any members from the, uh, public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero one eight? Seeing none, we'll take a look at Zoom, and I see no hands raised there. Um, having no one else wishes to speak on the item, uh, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Mr. Carey?
Thank you. I just in terms of information, when I see Alaska Clean Water Fund Loan, is this something that we think part of which might be forgiven us? Or will, should we anticipate that this entire amount of money, we will have to pay back?
Go ahead.
Um, we're anticipating that we will have to pay it back. There could be changes along the way. As you know, there have been changes with some forgivable, um, portions of loans, but at this time, we have not been notified it's forgivable. We'll continue to pursue, but.
I'll observe. Go ahead, Mr. Carey.
Do you know offhand what the rate of interest will be on?
I will get back, I, I'll get you an exact number. I hate to, I do know it's very low interest, usually around three percent, but I'll get back to you on that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, are there any objections to approving ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero one eight? Seeing none, ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero one eight is approved by unanimous consent. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero one nine, Increasing Estimated Revenues and Appropriations by One Hundred Thousand Dollars in the Utility Fund and One Hundred Thousand Dollars in the Utility System Improvement Capital Project Fund for the Whistle Hill Sewer Main Extension and Inspection Agreement, uh, introduced by the city manager. We have a motion to enact. Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the adoption of ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh one nine.
May I have a second, please? Mr. Nelson? Thank you. Report from the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, this, uh, the development agreement was approved at the last council meeting, and I, um, both the Economic Development Director and myself contacted, um, Mrs. Kroll regarding the development agreement and, um, when it would be signed and so that I could report on it for this meeting. Um, Mrs. Kroll sent a meeting, uh, excuse me, uh, an email to me, and I'm just going to read it. Um, after much reflection and due to the financial burden this development agreement will place on our family, we have decided not to pursue extending city, city infrastructure. We will continue to explore any and all alternatives and diligently, diligently maintain our existing system with the hope that we can continue to operate and serve our community. Thank you for your time and consideration. with the hope that we can continue to operate and serve our community. Thank you for your time and consideration. So based on this email, the appropriate course of action is to actually fail this ordinance.
Thank you for the report. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on twenty twenty four dash zero, one, nine? Seeing none, I'll look at Zoom and I see no hands raised on Zoom. Having no one uh, who wishes to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Seeing none, we'll call for the roll, a roll call vote.
Whackler? No. Nelson?
No.
Chilson?
No.
Hutchings?
No.
Carey?
No.
You have five no votes.
Ordinance uh, twenty twenty four dash zero, one, nine fails on a zero to five votes with one absence or excused. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero, two, zero. Increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by thirty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars in the general fund, thirteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-five in the utility fund and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty in the Street Improvements Capital Project Fund for the Diane Lane Cul-de-sac Potter Main and Road Construction Agreement uh, introduced by the city manager may have a motion to enact. Mr. Carey.
Thank you. I move the adoption of ordinance twenty twenty four, oh, two, zero.
May I have a second, please? Mr. Nelson, thank you. Uh, report from the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you also, you being the council, also approved the development agreement at the previous meeting and as of an hour um, before the meeting, all parties have signed the development agreement, including myself.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero, two, zero? Seeing none, uh, move on to Zoom and I see no hands raised there. Having no one uh, wishing to speak on the item, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Ms. Whackler.
Um, I don't think it's a conflict of interest, but I want to state um, my property is uh, neighbors to two of these people. So if there's any problem with me standing from the vote.
Yeah, there's no, okay, no conflict there.
Yeah.
Uh, anyone else? Any objections to approving ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero, two, zero? Seeing none, ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero, two, zero is approved by unanimous consent. Next item on the agenda is new resolutions and um, do you have a copy of that resolution? I will read it.
You should have it.
That's at the bottom of the stack. Next item, uh, new business is a resolution twenty twenty four dash zero, one, four. Commending Noble Cassidy for his exemplary service and representation while serving on the Soldatna City Council Student Representative, as student uh, council representative introduced by the mayor and council. Uh, that is approved on the um, consent agenda, so I will read the resolution now. Uh, resolution commending Noble Cassidy for his exemplary service and representation while serving as Soldatna City Council Student Representative. Whereas the Soldatna City Council adopted a Soldatna City Council Student Representative Policy on March twenty-six, two thousand fourteen. And whereas the policy states, it is important to seek out and consider student ideas, viewpoints and reactions to city decisions and policies affecting students. In order to provide student involvement, the Soldatna City Council may appoint a student representative and an alternate student representative. And whereas pursuant to the policy, Noble Cassidy was appointed to the Soldatna City Council as a student representative on January twelfth, excuse me, January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three. And whereas Mr. Cassidy was reappointed to the Soldatna City Council as a student representative on September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. And whereas Mr. Cassidy conducted himself as a true professional and always provided through reports on the happening, thorough reports on the happenings at Soldatna High School. And whereas through his term of service, Mr. Cassidy has surpassed all criteria that define a devoted and conscientious conscientious representative. And whereas Noble Cassidy has performed his duties with extraordinary insight and rare decorum. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council, the city of Soldatna, that the Soldatna City Council commends Noble Cassidy for outstanding service as a student representative and extend to him our best wishes for every future success. The resolution shall become effective immediately upon adoption and adopted by the city council on the eighth day of May, uh, May, two thousand, twenty, twenty-four. And I was going to add a whereas in there about always on time or just on time, uh, Mr. Cassidy, but uh, seemed to miss it tonight. So moving on to the next uh, agenda item and we'll make arrangements for Mr. Cassidy to receive his uh, resolution. Uh, next item on the agenda is number eight, Mayor's Council and uh, reports, uh, report and proclamations. Um, I had the opportunity to attend the Chamber of Commerce Scholarship Awards uh, Luncheon this afternoon. Uh, great turnout, uh, ten scholarships were awarded, um, very deserving and um, energetic young people. Um, and I wish them all the luck and uh, the Chamber of Commerce has held a scholarship fair uh, earlier this year and hopefully they will do another one. Um, and the reason I say that is there's a number of organizations here on the peninsula that I know of that had over uh, twenty thousand dollars worth of scholarships available, but were never applied for. Um, so I'm going to try to talk to some of these other groups to make sure they have a booth at the fair, uh, at the scholarship fair. So um, people can know how to get those awards. Uh, next item, um, congratulations to uh, Ms. O'Hara for the six, I think it was six awards she received uh, due to her reporting. Um, that's um, very good and we appreciate them, the writing and the reporting you do do. You do an excellent job and congratulations. Let's see, um, I had the opportunity to attend the library um, anniversary celebration and um, it was a great turnout, a lot of people, uh, and uh, I even bought some books while I was there. Uh, in tribute to the, my library, which is getting probably as big as the Soldatna Library, but um, it was a good turnout. And then the last thing I have on my list, because I'm probably forgetting something, is um, Kenai Peninsula Peninsula uh, Community College will be having their graduation ceremonies tomorrow. I believe they start at six P M. at the Kenai um, High School Gymnasium, not Gymnasium, Auditorium. So if you get the chance to attend, uh, please do. And I know I'm forgetting something because I usually fail to write it down. But uh, we had a kind of a discouraging report here just as we walked in here that it's supposed to snow and maybe upwards to an inch of snow. Uh, so what more can I say on that subject? Uh, we'll move on to the next item, uh, council reports on boards and commissions, uh, May first, two thousand twenty-four Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. Mr. Nelson.
Thank you. Uh, so Planning and Zoning met, um, we had uh, three main items on the agenda. It was quite a, quite a long meeting for Planning and Zoning, actually. So uh, the first one, uh, they considered a resol- uh, resolution that gave a gave a variance to the sign code. This was for Fred Meyer, uh, getting some new signs on the wall. And that code had to do with just the uh, the size, the area on the, on the sign. So that was approved. Um, there's a public hearing and discussion on an application for conditional use permit on Cahill Lane. Um, Cahill is um, kind of off Mackey Lake, right behind the Soldatna sign currently, I think, uh, and adjacent to an undeveloped lot, uh, that the applicant was uh, looking for. A conditional use permit for a storage yard and that is in a commercial district, but there was a lot of discussion about uh, that road, which is not to city standard and um, access and um, future um, strolling highway plans and and some other things. So long and short action was postponed on that. I think they were going to get some additional information on that road uh, from the administration and uh, do a little bit more um, looking at that uh, before a decision was made. Um, and then after that hearing, there was some good discussion on the uh, capital improvement plan and um, some of the items there and and updates. I noticed on that and I think we're of course going to be talking about that plan as well here in a few weeks. But uh, one thing just of interest that I know does the uh, comprehensive plan keeps edging up on that list because it is about time for that, even though it seems like we just did that a couple of years ago. It's it's been a while. So I'm looking forward to that and um, that is the end of my report.
Comprehensive report was uh, approved when I first started on the Planning and Zoning Commission. So that's been about fourteen years now. It's been a long time. Any questions for uh, Mr. Nelson? Seeing none, uh, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to touch on a couple of items contained in the packet. Um, the first being about the Loverley, Lover's Lane Water Line Break. I've provided the information regarding the contracts that were authorized. Um, and uh, there's still of the paving contract to be extended to the uh, contractor um, at the time of printing this, so undetermined who it would be. But um, thankfully, all of this is budgeted, so we we're able to um, not have to bring back an appropriation to you. I also attended K-PED and um, it was very um, informative. Um, I also very much enjoy um, information from the state's economists. Um, I jokingly say to the department directors that I kind of geek out on it. Um, because, and I really do believe it provides a lot of information. The um, ten years of outmigration from the state of Alaska is, you know, another reason why we, there are hiring issues. There are less bodies to hire at this point in time. And also um, that the Kenai Peninsula is stabilizing much quicker than the rest of the state and is actually growing. So very good news for our area. That later that afternoon, um, John Zarneski, our Economic Development Director, uh, provided a presentation on the Riverfront Redevelopment Project. He did a great job. And Shirley Kelly from um, Economic Development Authority was there in attendance to listen to that presentation. She was exclusively there for that. Tonight, I just want to make sure, um, our Utilities Director, Mike Allen, has some information about the Outfall Project, which is had, has been completed, but he's going to provide some information about that. And anything you want to add about Lover's Lane Water Line?
Good evening. Uh, enjoying a short meeting. I'm sorry I missed the last one. Uh, we were out at Lover's Lane making repairs. I have to condemn or amend uh, the contractor and the staff. Uh, everybody was Johnny on the spot and we were able to get that repair done in a timely fashion. I think I heard somebody say in the twenty-nine years that they've been here, that was the fastest water line repair that was done. So um, I appreciate everybody's help and and staff making that happen. The Outfall Project, it went very well. There were some pipe deterioration. They got replaced, rehabbed and we're up and running now, um, without any hiccups or changes and we're so far on budget and under time, so. Very well.
Any, any questions for Mr. Allen? Good, good news.
I do have one more item. Um, I'm sure all of you received this information. No, you did at the table, but perhaps via email. The Kenai Peninsula Borough Comprehensive Safety Action Plan. Um, it, we met today with part of the team that is working on the plan and I want to point you to the Q R code to take a survey and the survey is about any dangerous road areas in the borough. Um, we spoke specifically about the city, but any, any areas and they really do want to hear from you because they want to hear, um, the plan, the idea is to put a plan um, before the borough and then eventually it'll be for grant funding to make improvements to all of these road areas. And from our side, our emphasis is on pedestrian safety and will continue to be that for our city as well as some of our city streets that we know that we have some safety issues on. But please take this, do this survey. It's very important.
Any questions for the city manager? I do have one comment. Um, I was hoping to attend that, um, but it happens to be taking place right now. And I haven't quite figured out how I'd be in two places at once. One of the issues I see with um, highway safety around here, and I see it almost every day when I'm on the strolling, is speed. Um, people come down that hill and going up that hill, um, putting full throttle to it. Um, and there needs to be some enforcement around there. Um, and that's actually applies to all city streets. I see people cutting down here on Burt Street to try to beat the light there, which about ninety percent of the time they can't do. Um, and they're flying down this road. Um, so that is something that I think um, is is one of the important things about highway safety. Being a former traffic officer, uh, who wrote probably well over a hundred tickets a month, um, once they learn, most people will apply it. I drove an orange patrol car that was specifically orange to, so it was noticeable to people. And I could sit on the side of a four-lane road and they would pass me speeding and then ask me where I had been hiding. Um, and um, enough said. Okay, moving on. Next item on the agenda, public comments. Members of the public will have three minutes to comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Anyone here in the audience wishing to make any comments? Seeing none, I'll take a look at Zoom and I see no hands raised there. Uh, next item on the agenda, council comments. And uh, I'll start with Ms. Hutchings because I've been kind of ignoring her when she's making motions to approve an ordinance.
Well, just like the mayor, I was at the chamber luncheon today and it was wonderful to see, what did they have? Nine scholarships they gave?
Ten scholarships.
Ten scholarships, yeah. And um, it was enjoyable sitting on the scholarship committee. I was on the one that worked with Career and Technical and I was really impressed. We had fifteen scholarships that were applied for and between the chamber and the Kenai Peninsula Foundation, we were able to uh, honor eight of them. So that was really, really good. So I was impressed. These young people are doing well. They're excited about having a job and they're also excited about coming back to their community. So it was a great, great meeting. Thank you.
And I might make, want to add one comment to that. There was one individual received a scholarship whose uh, goal is to become a police officer, canine, uh, canine handler. So maybe he'll be coming back here. And Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, no comments tonight. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Whackler.
No comments tonight. Thanks.
Mr. Carey?
No comment.
Mr. Chilson?
Okay, I gotta break the streak here.
I'd be here for another hour.
I'll try to be somewhat brief. Uh, I do have some exciting news about the I Voted sticker contest that we have authorized as a city, so that is moving forward. Um, at this point in time, the program policies have been finalized and we're getting ready to open up submissions for that, starting on May fifteenth. Really, at this point in time, we're just waiting on the submission software to get finalized so they can open up advertisements for that. I believe there's going to be flyers, uh, social media, paper posts to go on that and get the word out to the community. And once we open up that submission uh, period, uh, again, this is uh, designed to engage artists at all level in the community. Uh, and we're really looking at three categories. Again, there's the um, the adult category nineteen and over, the youth category thirteen to nineteen, and our future voter category, which is going to be uh, everyone younger than thirteen. And again, the idea being that we're soliciting uh, local creativity to come up with new and unique uh, voting stickers that highlight all that Soldatna has to offer and and hopefully get people more engaged in the voting process here locally. And there's prizes, so get out and get involved.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Chilson. Uh, moving on to the next item on the agenda is nine, uh, item twelve, executive session. There is no reason for one this evening. And item thirteen is meeting announcements, uh, May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, mid biennium budget work session at four thirty P M. And on May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, city council meeting at six P M. Uh, seeing no further items on the agenda.